All right, it is 6:30. Good evening, everybody. Welcome back and Happy New Year. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of December 22, 2020?
No move. Councilwoman Gray?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The December 22, 2020 Journal is approved.
Madam Chair, I move to suspend the rules for the selection of the County Council Chair and Vice Chair for 2021 and for presentation of a resolution to Councilwoman Rochelle Walton Gray.
Second.
Discussion?
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
I have an objection to this suspension of the rules, and I will vote so shortly. I have a very short statement. It's pretty clear that former Councilwoman Gray intends, with the support of the County Executive and the Chair of this council, to unlawfully hold the office of council member for the 4th District. Former Councilwoman Gray's term began on January 1, 2017. In pursuant to the county charter and the Missouri Constitution, her term expired on December 31, 2020. The County Counselor and Chair Clancy claimed that the Proposition C Amendment, which changed the starting date of council terms for future council terms, retroactively increased Gray's January 1, 2017 term by 11 days. Such an interpretation not only betrays the plagues of the charter, which specifically retained four-year term for council members, but such a strained interpretation would squarely violate Article 6, Section 10 of Missouri Constitution, which limits all county office terms to four years. Interestingly, though, neither the legal opinion provided by the County Counselor's Office nor the January 4, 2021 legal interpretation provided by Chair Clancy references this Missouri constitutional provision. Such a blatant omission fundamentally undermines the basis for their legal opinions. The argument that pursuant to Missouri Constitution Article 7, 12, and its charter analog, 11.060, permits Gray to hold over the expiration of her term until January 12 is an argument that has been specifically rejected by a Missouri Supreme Court precedent that the County Counselor has specifically and alarmingly admitted from its analysis. The Missouri Supreme Court Mauser case dictates that when Council-elect Webb, who was duly elected at the November general election and qualified, as she's fulfilled all conditions prior to serving, as a matter of law, it deprives Gray from holding over beyond four-year term to which she was elected, especially when the will of the 4th District voters is clear, like it was at Mauser, that they no longer want Gray to represent them. As a matter of law, Gray was required to vacate this office on December 31, 2020, and the 4th District Council seat remains open until Council-elect Webb assumes the duties of office on January 12, 2021. For the above reasons, I hereby object. Gray purporting to take any actions as the 4th District Councilperson, voting on any matter, and refusing to vacate her office as required by the charter and the Missouri Constitution. She has no authority to act as the councilperson for the District 4. I understand there are other councilmembers who share this objection and will want to put it on the record. Additionally, for the record, I would like this objection to run for the entirety of the meeting and for each action taken. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Days.
Thank you. I want to join with Councilwoman Fitch in the same objection. I just wanted to make sure that for any entity or for anything that we're dealing with with Councilwoman Gray, that this is put in the minutes. I want to make sure that that is very clear for each action taken. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments or discussion?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. I respectfully disagree with my colleagues in the 3rd District. I have studied and agonized over this issue and this conflict for some time, and I'm confident that Councilman Fitch's interpretation of the charter, as well as the Missouri Constitution, is in fact wrong. Section 11.060 clearly and unequivocally extends the term until Councilwoman Gray's successor is, to use the term in the charter, qualified. That cannot happen unless and until she has taken the oath, which will not occur by the charter itself until next Tuesday, January 12. As such, Councilwoman Gray continues in her role as the representative for the 4th District. She is clearly authorized to vote for that reason, and to prevent her from doing so would be simply wrong. So I think that not only do we have the legal authority to proceed to, based on the charter language, we have a legal obligation to do so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further comments or discussion? Councilwoman Gray?
Yes, I find it quite contrary the fact that when we don't like what the rules are, we want to change them. Um, also called the charter is the charter. It was voted on. There was a Charter Commission that was composed of, I believe, nine people. One of those persons was a councilperson. Two people on the Charter Commission were assistants to councilmembers. And I believe that the discussion was had at that time to the implications of changing the charter. In fact, I was one of those persons who did not think it was a good idea to change the charter, but the majority thought it was a good idea, and they gave some compelling arguments to change it. And then they put it on the ballot, and the voters voted for it. Four years is four years. I will have been in office for four years, but I cannot be removed until the new person is sworn in in two weeks, which is per the charter. And my district, I still represent my district. I still get emails from my constituents. I get phone calls. I don't think they will want my office to be vacated, and they don't have anyone that they could communicate with. So for these reasons, I, and the fact that it is, again, I mentioned last time, the charter is silent as to what should occur. And therefore, we will, I think we should proceed against any objections. I'm here today per the charter, and I intend to participate.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Days.
I would like to ask the lawyer, Beth Orwick, a question, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Orwick, under what charter was Councilwoman Rochelle Gray sworn in? Under what charter were we utilizing at that particular time?
Councilwoman Days, I'm not inclined to give legal advice in a public setting.
It's not illegal advice. I'm just simply asking the question, under what charter was she elected?
I understand. I'm not inclined to give legal advice, and the question you're asking is actually legal advice in a public meeting.
So if, so if you choose not to answer that question, that's fine. So is it normal or is this still illegal when you are elected under one charter? There is a different charter that appears that you are now obligated under the new charter? Is that the way this works in St. Louis County?
The section that we're relying on did not change. The holdover section did not change between either charter, Councilman.
The, the change came with the starting of the term, correct?
That was a change.
Did the, did the change include an extension of a term?
The holdover section that we're talking about did not change.
The holdover section, did it hold over? Did it give a specific holdover time? That's what I'm asking, because...
You'd have to look at 11.060.
Yes, and I am looking at 11.060.
And that's what's the wrong intention.
And it seems that we are looking at until their successors are duly elected, because no one was appointed to this position. So the new person has been elected, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I did not hear your question.
The new person has been elected. 11.060 says that she'll continue to hold until their successor are duly elected, since we are not appointed in any fashion. Is that correct?
Councilwoman Days, I'm not inclined to give legal advice during a public meeting. I'm always available to be called, and I've provided a memo to the council.
You did that, and of course, as mentioned earlier, you neglected to indicate from the Mauser decision, which the Supreme Court has already opined on this. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly in that there is, in what you're deciding to decline on answering the appropriate question. So I thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Well, I will say the Mauser decision involves a death going into office. It's not applicable to the same situation we have here.
It was more than a death. I think if you continue to read on, I've read it. If you continue to read on, it was not merely a death that occurred, that it included vacations of offices and terms that were applied. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything further? All right. I heard a second from Councilman Tracus, I believe. Um, we will go ahead and do our voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. Chair, I request a roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
No. I'm sorry. Should be against. Madam Chair? I hit the wrong button. Thank you.
Oh, okay, yes. It has been moved over.
Madam Chair, on the rule that the rules be suspended for the purpose of selecting the St. Louis County Chair and Vice Chair for 2021, presentation of a resolution to Councilwoman Rochelle Walton Gray, there are four ayes and three ayes.
Motion carries. The floor is now open for nominations for Council Chair for 2021.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. I nominate... Thank you. I nominate the current chairman, Councilwoman Clancy from District 5, to continue on as Chair of the Council for 2021.
Madam Chair?
I second that.
Um, we don't need a second, Councilwoman Dunaway. Um, no, we do not actually. Rules do not require a second for this nomination. Councilman Fitch?
I nominate Councilwoman Rida Days to be the Council Chair for 2021.
Okay, so Councilmember Clancy has been nominated, and Councilwoman Rida, her Days, has been nominated. Are there any other nominations?
Discussion, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Dunaway.
Um, so I've really grappled the past several weeks with where I'd like to see this council go in this new year and who might lead us in that direction. I thought a lot back over this, my first year here, my first year in public service, and when and how each of us stepped up to lead during a 2020 that presented us with a number of unprecedented challenges, both nationally, locally, and right here inside our own homes, Ali, including a global pandemic that didn't come with any instructions. Despite these challenges and how we continue to deal with many of them, what I most see when I look to our future is this promising new year. We have an amazing opportunity to find a new auditor with the background, experience, and eagerness to build an effective and efficient auditing function in St. Louis County. We have the business community, nonprofit leaders, and our communities behind us as we finally work to bring justice to longstanding racial inequities in our policing and criminal justice systems. The current trajectory of St. Louis County's budget and the serious long-term recruiting and retention issues we face as an organization is a grave challenge, if not met with creative, purposeful, driven leadership. This past year, it has pained me to be on this team, divided by politics, a pandemic, and a lack of common purpose. I don't think the circumstances can be blamed on any one person. We are in and have been in uncharted waters, most certainly, and I sincerely believe that we are all doing the best we can. But that's not good enough. We have serious issues we need to face, and we have a serious need for creative and determined leadership to guide us into a future with more promise than we leave behind. And I do genuinely see a brighter future for us as a legislative body and for St. Louis County on the other side of this crisis. But I've watched few of us lead with the integrity, passion, courage, and commitment to our constituents and the greater good for St. Louis County, I believe, our future demands. We have seen those things in our chairwoman, Lisa Clancy, and I believe we need her strong and steady leadership in these uncertain times. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion? Are there any further nominations for Chair? Nominations for Chair for 2021 are closed. We will vote by roll call vote. Please state your choice of the nominees for Chair by name when your name is called. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Days.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Councilwoman Clancy.
Councilmember Fitch?
Councilwoman Days.
Councilmember Gray?
Councilwoman Clancy.
Councilmember Clancy?
Clancy.
Councilmember Tracus?
Councilwoman Clancy.
Councilmember Harder?
Councilwoman Days.
Madam Chair, on the vote for Council Chair for 2020, there are four votes for Councilwoman Clancy and three votes for Councilwoman Days.
Um, with that, Councilmember Clancy is the 2021 County Council Chair.
Madam Chair? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilwoman Fitch. I apologize.
Uh, Councilman Fitch?
Madam Chair, I'd like the record to show I'm offering previous notice of my intent to make a motion to rescind this current motion related to the selection of the Chair. I believe it was unlawful. The vote should reflect a three-to-three tie, because Councilwoman Gray's vote should not count. That's my comment.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Tracus.
Not to belabor this, but by its very statement, Councilman Fitch's comment is inconsistent at best and wrong at worst, because by that analysis, neither myself nor Councilwoman Dunaway should be able to vote. And that's clearly not the case. And again, because Section 11.060 is clear and direct, there's no substance to that position. I just felt compelled to make that record. Thank you.
Madam Chair, follow up?
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
If Councilman Tracus really wants to go there, legally, he's right. So there should be... Four people should be voting here. That's it, just the four. It really should be three in favor of Days and one in favor of Clancy, and that's Clancy's vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, I believe, Diane, can you make sure the record reflects Councilman Fitch's statement and objection?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right. Um, we will now, um, take nominations. The floor is now open for nominations for Council Vice Chair for 2021. Are there nominations for Council Vice Chair? Councilwoman Days?
I'd like to nominate Mark Harder.
Um, Councilmember Harder is nominated for Vice Chair of the County Council for 2021. Are there any other nominations? I would like to nominate Councilmember Tracus as Vice Chair of the County Council for 2021. Councilmember Tracus is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations for Vice Chair, so hearing no other nominations. All those in favor? Um, well, we will roll call. I'm sorry, there's multiple nominees. So we will roll call vote, just like we did for Chair. Please state your choice of the nominees for Vice Chair by name when your voice is called. Madam Clerk, the nominations for Vice Chair are closed. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Harder.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Councilman Tracus.
Councilmember Fitch?
Councilman Harder.
Councilmember Gray?
Councilman Tracus.
Councilmember Clancy?
Councilman Tracus.
Councilmember Tracus?
Councilman Tracus.
Councilmember Harder?
Councilman Harder.
Madam Chair, on the vote to select the Council Vice Chair for 2021, there are four votes for Councilman Tracus and three votes for Councilman Harder.
Um, with that, Councilman Tracus is the Vice Chair of the County Council for 2021. Um, congratulations, Councilman Tracus. I look forward to working with you in this role. Um, I want to share with everyone that I'm honored to serve in this role again. Um, I recognize very much that we are still in a crisis here in St. Louis County, throughout our region, throughout our country, as we continue to work through the COVID-19 pandemic, and we'll keep working through it. Um, I am committed to working with this entire council, even those who did not support me tonight. Um, it's time that we, that we stop campaigning and we govern and put our constituents and our community members that we serve first so that we can continue to get things done, good things done for our community throughout this year. Um, and I can, I look forward to working with each of you in that capacity.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Days.
I want the record to show that I am offering a previous notice of my intent to make a motion to rescind this current motion relating to the selection of Vice Chair. Want to make sure that the record indicates that.
Madam Clerk, please make sure the record indicates Councilwoman Days' intentions as stated.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. I want to congratulate you and look forward to working with you and the other members of the council in a bipartisan way to right the ship and deal with the rest of this pandemic as we need to and govern with the people of St. Louis County in mind, first and foremost. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Tracus. Um, with that, now we will move to the next portion of our, of our evening tonight. Madam Clerk, please read Resolution Number 1.
Yes, Madam Chair. Resolution Number 1, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Dunaway, and Tracus. Whereas Rochelle Walton Gray was born in St. Louis, graduated from Southwest High School, and earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in Public Administration from the University of Missouri-St. Louis. And whereas Rochelle is married to a fellow public servant, Missouri State Representative Alan Gray, and they are the loving parents of Alan II and Elena, and are also doting grandparents. And whereas Rochelle served as the Missouri State Representative for the 75th District from 2008 through 2016, and during her tenure, served on multiple committees, sponsored many pieces of legislation with the goal of improving the lives of Missourians, and served as a clear, strong, and passionate voice for her constituents. And whereas Rochelle has served as the councilperson for the 4th St. Louis County Council District since January 1, 2017, and during her tenure, she has once again served her constituents with passion, energy, and above all else, a commitment to justice and equity for all. And whereas Rochelle has been a leader on the County Council, and in 2020 was elected Council Vice Chair by her colleagues and was appointed Chair of the Justice, Health, and Welfare Committee while also serving as a member of multiple other important council committees. And whereas Rochelle has never wavered in her commitment to work day in and day out to improve the lives of St. Louis Countyans, especially her constituents in North St. Louis County. And whereas it is appropriate for the County Council and all St. Louis Countyans to pause to honor a woman who has dedicated her life to the service of others. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1. The County Council expresses its deepest gratitude to the honorable Rochelle Walton Gray for her dedicated service to the people of St. Louis County. Section 2. The Administrative Director shall prepare a certified copy of this resolution to present to Councilwoman Walton Gray as a permanent token of the Council's admiration, gratitude, and respect.
Madam Chair, I root for adoption of Resolution Number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
I abstain.
Madam Chair, this requires a roll call vote.
Oh, okay, yes. Please go ahead and do the roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days?
I abstain.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Wanted to note, I voted in favor of the resolution on the meeting on the 22nd, but since many of you abstained, it failed. So I will abstain on this vote.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Harder?
For the same reasons stated by Councilman Fitch, I abstain on this resolution.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 1, there are four ayes and three abstentions.
Resolution Number One is adopted. Um, Council, Councilwoman, oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, I just, I want to be brief because I know we have a long night, but I do want to thank all of you for, um, the resolution today. I appreciate it, even from, from those who abstained today, and, uh, and I'm fully aware why it was tried, we tried to present it last, at the last meeting, but I'm glad to be here, and, um, I truly am going to miss, um, this, being in this position. I missed being, um, in the legislature as well, so this is my passion, this is what I love to do. Um, I've had some great accomplishments here, uh, been able to do a lot for North County, bring a lot of resources, development, um, see the CARES Act program, be successful for small businesses and such. Uh, four years ago, I had to make a tough decision to run against the, uh, thirty-two-year regime, and I didn't take it lightly. I ran because I knew that it was time for, um, a change and to have a new person in, someone who, um, could speak for the people and try to do my best for the people, and that's what I've done. Um, in many ways, I hope that I could continue to be in the realm of public service, um, as I've been allowed to do so far, and I welcome whatever comes, uh, my way in the future. I cannot question, uh, God, and several people have, many, many people, and I like to thank those people who have sent me, uh, well wishes and just encouraging me to, um, just seek for what God has planned for me, and I don't take that lightly, and I truly appreciate when people, uh, say that, um. God has a plan, and that's all I, I, I just have to, to lean on that, and I know everything will work out. I will continue to be in service, and if anyone needs, or this, uh, council needs my assistance, I will be glad to, uh, do what I can, as long as we're working for the people. I have to add, though, something I, I hate to see is, I have to agree with Councilwoman Dunaway. This past year has been pretty heartbreaking. We haven't come together much at all. We haven't tried to, um, meet one another where we are, we haven't, we haven't even shown a, a, a lot of kindness to one another, and this, this year has been a struggle. Uh, prior to that, we were together, we worked to, uh, against the previous, uh, executive branch because we knew we needed what we, we knew we needed to do what was best for our constituents, so we worked together, but this past year, we have not done it, and the past few months has been, have been even worse. So I hope that this council will try to do better and try to work with one another and to see common ground where there is common ground. We're all people, and I'm starting to ramble now because when she said that, it really struck a chord with me, that we really have not worked together, and I, I want to see a change, and I want to just end with this scripture. It says, "Therefore, if any man be of Christ, he is a new creature. Old things are passed away; behold, all things are become new." And so this is a new year, and I hope that we all will become a new creature in Christ and in humankind. So thank you all, I appreciate the, the, um, resolution, and again, thank you.
But wait, there's more. Um, Councilwoman Gray, um, I know that, um, it is difficult to physically present this to you, but we have a plaque for you that we will make sure gets to you to commemorate your service to the county council. Um, it honors your service to the Fourth District as Councilwoman, and also as Vice Chairwoman this past year, um, in recognition of your passion, commitment, and dedication to St. Louis County. Um, Councilwoman Gray, it, uh, I'm about halfway through my term, and I remember and always will remember how much you were supportive to me in my first few weeks and even before then, as I was learning the ropes of the county council, and it is such an honor, um, to have had the opportunity to be mentored and supported by someone with such great experience as you, coming from Jefferson City, the state legislature, and now in the county council, and, um, you have helped me think about, um, the kind of role model I hope I can be to, um, generations of women maybe that come after me and think about public service and pursuing public service. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Trakus.
Thank you, um, before we move on to the agenda tonight, I want to say that Rochelle Walton Gray is a fearless and intrepid woman. She is humble, obviously, but her accomplishments are legion, and early on in her term, she was presented with the difficult decision of joining a bipartisan coalition that had decided that good government was the priority, not rubber stamping the county executives, um, questionable actions. And she, along with the other members of that coalition, took heat for months and months, but she never wavered. She was always the strength, and so I, I wanted to just acknowledge that tonight and let her know how much I've appreciated working with her and how much her courage and commitment to good governance lifted me up many times when I needed it, so I appreciate her beyond words. Thank you, Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Dunaway.
I only have one wee thing to add, and to always bring kindness every day to everything. Thank you. Also, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I think this is a really nice segue because I believe we also have something for you. Is that right?
No.
Diane? Okay, Diane's nodding, she's bringing you something. Um, it's been such a great year having you at the helm, Lisa. I know that you were hit pretty hard by some unexpected things, but you kept the ship steady, and you helped us get through a really rough and tumble year, and, um, I'm really, I'm, I'm happy to, yes, be presenting this award to you and look forward to another year of your strong and steady leadership. So thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, I will have to echo, um, uh, Councilwoman Dunaway. I appreciate your hard work, your dedication to, um, your, your seat as chair. I know that you've had to endure a lot, um, more than most probably have had to endure, probably more, I, I, I would be comfortable in saying that. More than most have had to endure in your position, and, um, all in all, you persevered, and you were unwavering, and you stood strong even when you didn't think you could, because I'm sure there was times you didn't. So I wanted to tell you, I appreciate you as well, as, as our chair and our leader, and, and the leadership that you provided.
Thank you, Councilwomen, and, and Councilwoman Gray, I, um, I couldn't have done it without you this past year as, as the Vice Chair, so thank you.
And I just want to add this a little bit, I, I should have thanked my family, my husband, of course, who's always with me and my children, who are hopefully listening, but I appreciate them all, they, and my sisters, they all helped to keep me, um, on course. So I think, I want to thank my family and my mother and my father, of course, of course, of course, my mother and my dad, because of whom I always say I would not be here for more reasons than one. So I just wanted to make sure I said that before I forgot.
Well, very well, well, we will, um, we will miss your contributions to St. Louis County Council, Councilwoman Gray. Um, and with that, um, we've got business to do tonight, so we will not send you off without a little bit more work. Um, so we will go ahead and proceed with our agenda, starting with bid openings. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move on to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we will move to road and bridge, road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one, Second District.
Receive, file, plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, item number one, Second District.
Receive and file?
So ordered.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number three, all districts.
Receive and file, so ordered.
Item number four.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, Second District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as requested, as recommended, sorry.
So ordered.
Um, Madam Chair, I think that one requires a second.
Okay, so a second and then a voice vote?
Aye.
I don't think so.
Um, can I ask the county councilor real quick if that one requires a second?
I, I don't believe so. Let me have a moment to, to look at that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because-
Number six?
We are on number six, yes, it's a, uh, agreement that we are approving as recommended. I believe that takes a second and a, a voice vote.
Number six, you're right, um, Diane, a second and a voice vote.
Yes, that, um, actually is my mistake, uh, in the red line, so I think we have about four or five of these coming up, so they will-
There's a few more.
Yes.
I'll, I'll keep, I'll watch for them too.
So, uh, Councilwoman Dunaway, I guess, made a motion for, to receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I apologize for that mistake. Moving on to item number seven for Third District, it's the same type of matter, it needs a motion and second.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight, Second District.
Um, receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number ten, Seventh District.
File, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eleven, Third District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number twelve, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Motion through item number fifteen.
So ordered.
One moment, Madam Chair. Item number sixteen, Fifth District.
Uh, receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number seventeen, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eighteen.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number nineteen, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty, First District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number twenty-one, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty-two.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number twenty-three, and that will be the order.
Item number twenty-four. Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number twenty-six, please.
So ordered.
Item number twenty-seven, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number twenty-eight, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Chief of Police.
So ordered. All right, report to the county executive. Good evening, Dr. Page.
Thank you, Lisa, and, uh, good evening, everyone. As we begin a new year, we do so with a vaccine that will ultimately curb the spread of the virus and allow us to move about more safely. Restrictions put into place in twenty twenty were necessary to slow the spread and save lives. We must continue with some of those restrictions until the vaccine is widely available later this year. As I have said from the beginning of this pandemic, we rely on science, on our public health experts, and our medical professionals to guide us. The health and safety of all of our residents will always be top priority, and we regularly review our protocols to ensure they are appropriate for responding to the virus. The Department of Public Health has been working closely with a core group of restaurant owners on new safety protocols for indoor dining, and because new COVID cases continue to fall in St. Louis County, the Health Department's new protocols permit indoor dining again, and our restaurants began offering the service yesterday. The Health Department and the restaurant group have agreed on a set of straightforward guidelines for indoor dining. They include five key changes. I highlighted these last week during my media briefing, but with the protocols going into place this week, I want to go over them once more. First, occupancy at restaurants are limited to twenty-five percent of the- at restaurants are limited to 25% of the fire code capacity, with a total number of diners sitting at tables spaced at six feet apart, whichever is lower. Bankrupt facilities are also limited in their occupancy to 25% or 50 people maximum. Second, new mask protocols are in place to better protect restaurant workers. All customers must wear a mask when entering and exiting the restaurant, and when visiting the restroom. Customers must also wear a mask while interacting with restaurant employees, including when food and drinks are brought to the table. Third, restaurants and bars are required to close by 10:00 P.M. Fourth, some bars have had to install physical barriers like plastic, plexiglass. And fifth, restaurants and bars are recording the names and contact information for patrons to assist with contact tracing and case investigation if that proves necessary. There are many more details available on these new Health Department guidelines at STLcorona.com. Click on the green "Safety Guidelines" button on the bottom of the homepage. I wanted to thank all the restaurant owners and workers who have followed the existing protocols to keep their customers and employees safe. The pandemic has been harder on the restaurant industry than on most, and these new restrictions allow restaurants to open their dining rooms and provide diners an opportunity to expand support of our local businesses. It's important to emphasize that we were able to make this policy change because the numbers are going in the right direction. But it's also important for everyone to realize that indoor dining, even with these protocols, continues to pose substantial risks to patrons and employees alike. We've worked carefully to mitigate those risks as much as possible, and I want to thank the restaurant owners who worked on this with us for their collaboration. Our public health experts are doing their best to craft policies that protect us all from a deadly virus. I hope we can all join in supporting our local restaurants as they reopen during this pandemic in a way that is safe for their customers and for their workers. With 2021 underway, let's stay on the safe path forward so we can continue to rebuild our economy and keep everyone healthy. That's all for now. Thank you, Lisa.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Page. Um, Councilman Fitch.
Can we ask the county executive to talk a little bit about the letter he released this afternoon regarding the Mount City Bar Association relationship?
I'm sure I'll refer you to that, uh, press release. Uh, that was worked out by my staff. Um, there is one, um, MBWE certified law firm in, uh, St. Louis County, and we currently do business with them, and the Mount City Bar has been working with us to identify minority attorneys to, um, be recruited for our staff, and that relationship has been positive, and we have, uh, agreed to continue that effort, and also to work with the Mount City Bar as they identify minority attorneys in our community who can help St. Louis County with some of their tough outside legal work.
And could you tell us when you started this discussion with Mount City Bar about doing it?
You know, that's been going on for a while. Um, I'm sure that it was part of the recent conversation with this, but I know that, um, our county councilor's office has referred to their website for references in the past, and I know that their leadership has referred people to our, um, county councilor's office as well, but, um, those are personality issues, and I don't have all the details on them.
So will you support, uh, sub bill that we tried to vote on and passed last week that did exactly what, uh, you have suggested in this letter with the Mount City Bar Association? If we bring that back and it comes to you for signature, uh, would you, will you support that?
Well, I have to look at the detail of your proposed legislation, Councilman. I don't know if you're characterizing its impact correctly, but I'd be glad to talk to you and any interested parties about, um, efforts to improve minority participation, not just in hiring across county government, in construction as we have a program in place, and in other professional services, and with vendors in our community who have been committed to that for a long time and will continue to work on it, and I'm glad to have your support in that effort.
Okay, thank you, and I, if you had a chance to see Adolphus Pruitt, the, uh, president of the NAACP, his letter regarding this?
Yes, Adolphus Pruitt is, uh, president of the St. Louis City NAACP, and we have worked with Mr. Pruitt in the past. We also have a very close working relationship with the St. Louis County NAACP, who has helped us, um, with our relationship with the Mount City Bar Association, which is a very strong partnership.
I look forward to, uh, working with you on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Fitch and Dr. Page, for that, um, discussion. Um, I know that this pertains to an item that will be coming up later in our agenda, so I do expect more discussion when we get to that in the agenda this evening. Um, so with that, we will move to report of special committees. I don't think we have a report of special committees this evening, so we will move to public forum. This evening, we have eight registered speakers. When your name is announced, listen for the clerk to ask you to begin speaking, and then state your first and last name and zip code for the record. The clerk will inform you when your three minutes is up. Um, just to remind everyone how this works during our virtual forum, um, there is an opportunity for folks who wish to speak during the virtual forum to sign up beginning 30 minutes, or 28 minutes, I believe, prior to, um, the meeting, and so it's very important that you sign up, um, not before that 28 minutes and not after that 28 minutes if you want to get called to speak. Um, we do encourage you to turn your camera on, but we understand that not everyone has the technological ability to do that, so if you can't, that's okay too, but, uh, we do encourage you to, if you can. Um, so with that, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Please proceed, Mr. Kasoff.
Okay, uh, my name is Nick Kasoff, zip code is 63135. Most of us were shocked by the telephone call between President Trump and Georgia officials seeking to illegally alter the outcome of an election. Some have described his action as unlawful, even impeachable. I will credit Chairman Clancy with this. Nobody had to leak a recording of tonight's meeting. The new county charter is very clear. The chair is to be selected at the first regular meeting in each calendar year. The charter under which Rochelle Walton Gray was elected is also very clear. Members serve for a term of four years, so the terms of both Gray and of Mr. Trachis have both expired. The term of Ms. Dunaway, who was elected to fill the vacant and now expired term of Mr. Page, has also expired. That means that, for better or worse, the council seats of these three districts are now vacant. This evening, those three have no more right to vote in this council than I do. When you called the role tonight and mentioned council members Gray, Trachis, and Dunaway, you were wrong. They are not council members tonight. Ms. Gray said she still gets calls from her constituents. She is wrong. Ms. Gray has no constituents, and in fact, Mr. Trachis, you are absolutely correct. Neither you nor Ms. Dunaway should have been able to vote tonight either, and I'm puzzled at how Mr. Trachis was elected as vice chair when at this moment he is not a member of the council. What this means is that the election of leadership and any other action taken by the council this evening is unlawful. The right thing to do, given the discrepancy between the two charters, would have been to cancel this evening's meeting and hold the business over until next week, when the council was properly sworn in. Of course, in the case of council member Gray, we have the further difficulty that she is not a member of the new body. In no case that I'm aware of anywhere do lame duck legislators get to select the leadership of a body that they will never join. This is nothing less than a power play by Sam Page and his allies on council. It is disgraceful, and it's unlawful. The residents of this county deserve better, and if the council does not relent in this lawless action, I would be delighted to serve as a plaintiff in a lawsuit to nullify the actions of this evening's unlawful assembly. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Erica Hoffman, followed by Johanna Bodine.
Uh, Happy New Year. My name's Erica Hoffman. I live in the 63026 zip code. I wanted to reach out to the council tonight and express my sincere gratitude for the amount of hard work that all of you have put into helping our community during this horrible global pandemic over the past year. I know it hasn't been easy, and in addition, many of the issues impacting people in our area have been politicized by those seeking to score a few points and to an already loyal base. This is during a highly charged year of politics that continues even today. I wish it would stop. My family is committed to helping slow the spread and save lives by working from home, utilizing virtual learning, and avoiding contact with others. We follow the ordinances in place. We appreciate these rules and hope through continued vigilance and vaccines, we will be able to overcome this pandemic and move in, move on with our lives in the next year or so. Thank you again to those on the council working hard to keep us safe, and I hope you all stay safe as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Johanna Bodine, followed by Suzanne Burley.
Hello. Councilmembers, my name's Johanna Bodine. My zip code is 63005. I want to thank you, Councilman Fitch and, um, Councilwoman Days for standing up so strongly tonight for our constitution. I, um, will, will not repeat everything that Mr. Kasoff, um, said so eloquently. I think his statement was spot on, and I'd be happy to sit alongside him as a plaintiff in a lawsuit, um, because the, the actions here are just despicable, and St. Louis County residents really deserve better than the power play games that are happening on this council repeatedly. And Councilwoman, um, Clancy, Council Chair Clancy, it's your responsibility as the council chair and supposed leader to bring the council members together in a bipartisan way. The fact that you, Councilwoman Dunaway, and Ms. Walton Gray do not believe that happened over the last year is no one's responsibility but your own. That leadership falls to you. I also, um, would like to make note that there was a request for RFP that was in the council agenda today presented by the Director of, um, Public Health, Spring Schmidt, to request RFP for OB-GYN services. As a citizen of St. Louis County, I'd like to understand more about why it's necessary for St. Louis County Public Health to be providing OB-GYN services. I understand and empathize with women across St. Louis County, across the country, who have been impacted by the pandemic, but there are a number of organizations who provide free services, including Medicare, to women for OB-GYN, um, medical services. So I'm very curious as to why St. Louis County government be getting involved with that, or why we would be funding that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Suzanne Burley, followed by Jake Day.
Yes, this is Suzanne Burley. My zip code is 63123. At the last meeting, I made a request to extend the register for public comments to one hour versus the 25 minutes. As mentioned, 25 minutes does not allow enough time to get registered, connect to the meeting, and troubleshoot if problems do arise. I also requested that screenshots and additional instruction be added to the how to make public comments area. If you take a look at the tab under public notices, you will see that the Board of Zoning Adjustments meeting has instructions along with screenshots showing participants how to get registered to connect to the meeting. Is there a reason we aren't doing this for the council meetings? And how do we know our comments are being heard? I have emailed or called in often, but have yet to see any changes or even acknowledgement of what is written in my comments. Maybe someone on the council can share the point of public comments with us. In addition, a reminder to the professionals on the council, regardless if you considered holding a vote tonight for the county chair as a non-issue, or you were taking advantage of having numbers to go in your favor by keeping Gray on longer than her term, consider the professionalism of your actions. We have a newly elected council member who had every right to vote on who would be the county chair going forward. Ms. Webb also expressed her interest in participating in that vote. Several of you mentioned just tonight that you hope to improve the cohesiveness of the county council. Well, what type of working relationship do you intend to have with Ms. Webb in the future with starting things out this way? And Kelly Dunaway, it has pained us to listen to you for the past year. I very highly suggest you go back and watch some of the videos of past meetings. I would not describe you as showing kindness to others. Your tone and actions are sarcastic, condescending, and very overdramatic. And Lisa Clancy, please practice what you preach and stop your own campaigning. To say that you plan to work with all members of the council is just untrue based on your previous actions. I can only hope that this unethical vote is rescinded because I honestly cannot stomach the thought of listening to you chair for the meetings for a whole nother year. And I myself went unprofessional with these comments because I want you all to know how very unprofessional you sound when you do things just like this. And to Ms. Walton Gray, good luck in your future endeavors. I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jake Day, followed by Dawn Chapman.
Uh, Madam Clerk, Mr. Day is not with us, so if we could jump down to the next speaker, please?
So Dawn Chapman?
Can I please, um, I would like to submit a written record of my comments to be put on the record, please? Thank you. Can you guys see me as well? I really want my video on. I don't like talking to you guys and not being able to see you, and you guys have been kind enough to keep yours on. So, thank you. I had a whole list of comments here to make, and I'm just heartbroken right now. I really am. This was really a hard council meeting to sit through. The reason I wanted to call in, um, is because I don't feel like the vulnerable people, and we keep hearing you guys mention vulnerable, protect the vulnerable. I'm not so sure you know how that sounds when you say that. My family is a vulnerable family. I have a son with type 1 diabetes. I have a husband with an autoimmune disease, and we are the ones that, when everybody who calls in says, you know, um, our rights are being trampled, protect the vulnerable, but let us abled folks go out and do what we want to do. I think that we're missing an opportunity to really listen to that statement and what it means to folks like me and, and my child and my husband and my family. What that means is that we have to give up our rights so that others don't have to, and there's no compromise there. And I think when, um, when people are talking about this, and when people are calling you, and when you are, as council members, are out there making statements, you know, several of you have put out different posts, you know, we really think that the vulnerable should be protected, please make sure when you say that, if you're going to say that, that you follow up in that post with ways that you're going to protect us. Because when you say that, and you just let it go, that is what you're saying. You're saying, you guys, you guys who have disabilities, you all just stay inside. And, and do what? While we go and do everything else. So I, for one, am grateful for these mandates, and I'm sad that we even had to have them because I sure as heck would wear a mask for somebody else's health, and it still floors me that others won't do the same and that we even have to have these. But you know what? This, these mandates have offered protection to me. They're the only thing that has allowed my family to really survive this pandemic. And moving forward, um, I'm really concerned for those of us who have disabled family members, that we're not going to have access to this vaccine. And I think that in terms of council unity, I would really like to see you guys come together and discuss that in ways that you're going to help us gain access. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carla Gruy, followed by Arnie Deanhoff.
Okay, this is Carla Gruy.
Okay, this is Carla Gruy, and my zip code is six three one two two. The charter is clear, as is the state constitution. The council member terms are four years. It does not say four years and 11 days. Also clear was Council Chair Clancy. At the last meeting, when she stated that the newly amended charter has obvious inconsistencies to be fixed. Failing to uphold their oath, a few members of this council are picking and choosing which portions of the charter they want to acknowledge. That is very wrong. Only decision that would have avoided the ex would have been to hold the first regular meeting on the second Tuesday of January. At today's meeting, there are only four terms that have not expired. Days, Harder, Fitch, and Clancy. If Councilwoman Dunaway Tracus would like their votes to count, they should acknowledge until after their oaths are taken. According to amended charter on January 12th, they are not official representatives of their districts, and they have no right to vote. Clearly Rochelle does not have a legitimate vote today. Acknowledge that his term as county executive has expired, and it will not be filled officially until the oath is taken according to the charter next January 12th.
Thank you. Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is Arnie Deanhoff.
Yes, thank you very much, members of the council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanhoff, state and county regional public advocate. I just, zip code six thirty-three sixty-six. I just wanted to extend a happy new year to each and every council member. And let's pray for a new brighter 2021 for all. This year of, or the past year, 2020, has been very difficult to endure. And I'm looking forward to a brighter 2021. To the council, let's stop bickering and let's stop the inviting. I ask that you do the right thing at the right time for all citizens. Let's focus on county reforms that are much needed for each citizen who matters at the end of any day. In 2021, I'm asking the council to reform the following departments and functions of county government. Number one, the Department of Corrections or Department of Justice Services. Again, you need to find a director who can take on the leadership role of this county and turn around that department. The courts, both the circuit courts and the municipal courts, need reform. Our police department needs reform. I'm not happy with the current police chief in her ability or leadership to run the county police department, and I'm asking for a new police chief. Civil rights, civil rights of St. Louis County needs to be reformed. Access to government of citizens needs to be reformed. Streamlining county services so citizens can easily access and have the ability to access county services needs to be reformed. And finally, the entire county, including the county council, needs to be advocating for citizens and going through the mirage of complex and hard policies and utilizing government, government, or county government services. The prize at the end of the day is helping people. And it should be helping people regardless of politics, regardless of political affiliation. And it's about serving all citizens in terms of realizing their need to access public governmental services and the needed reforms in St. Louis County government. Thank you, Madam Clerk and Madam Chairwoman. Again, happy new year to all.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that's all the public speakers.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know that there was a comment from a speaker about making sure that her comments were in the record. I do believe that all of the comments that are shared from the public do get written into the record and are recorded in the journal. So that will be true of all of the comments. And we will proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance, amending ordinance number 27,481 by repealing and reenacting sections one and two pertaining to a contract with Mission Critical Partners LLC, formerly Black and Beach Corporation, for consulting and engineering services in connection with implementation of the emergency communication system. Bill number two, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance approving acceptance of donation of $1,975 from youth in need and appropriating same for support of a family dinner cooking class for youth involved with the family court. Bill number three, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $150,000 from the Department of Justice, appropriating the same for support of the family court's domestic violence programs and services for victims of domestic violence, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number four, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $500,000 from the Department of Justice, appropriating the same for support of the family court's juvenile transition program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number five, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance, amending ordinance number 27,603 pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for support of the Department of Public Health's Home Asthma Assessment and Education Program. Bill number six, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Oates Associates, Inc. for professional engineering services related to the Ferguson Avenue Resurfacing Project, AR-1795, and the Midland Boulevard Resurfacing Project, AR-1797, and authorizing the Director of Transportation and Public Works to execute necessary documents and revisions to the schedule of work activities. Bill number seven, introduced by Councilmembers Days and Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with George Butler Associates, Inc. for professional engineering services related to the Kingsland Avenue Resurfacing Project, AR-1717, and the Vernon Avenue Resurfacing Project, AR-1737, and authorizing the Director of Transportation and Public Works to execute necessary documents and revisions to the schedule of work activities. Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember Days. An ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, the Boeing Company Project Series 2021, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $45 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the county executive to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. We will proceed with perfection.
Perfection of bills. Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold. Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Councilman Tracus, bill number 32.
Yes, I, I said I moved to hold bill number 32.
Okay, we didn't hear that. Thank you. Bill number 32 is held.
Thank you. Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold bill 266.
Bill 266 is held.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold bill 267.
Bill 267 is held.
Bill number 302, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Walton Gray.
Move to hold bill number 302. Bill number 302 is held.
Bill number 317, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 317. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 317 is perfected.
Bill number 318, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 318.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 318 is perfected.
Bill number 319, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to perfect bill number 319. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 319 is perfected.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 320.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 320 is perfected.
Bill number 321, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 321.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 321 is perfected.
Bill number 322, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 322, please. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 322 is perfected.
Bill number 323, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for bill number 323. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 323 is perfected.
Bill number 324, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 324, please. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 324 is perfected.
Bill number 325, introduced by Councilwoman Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 325.
Second. Gray.
All the, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 325 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold bill number 14, please.
Bill 14 is held.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 76.
This, this bill has been referred to a committee of the whole that we're hoping to hold at the end of the month. And for now, I move to hold substitute bill number one for bill number 76. Substitute bill number one for bill number 76 is held and has been referred to the committee of the whole.
Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
We're still working on this bill. Hopefully, we will have an opportunity to move it forward soon or have a substitute bill soon. So with that, I will hold bill number 202. Bill number 202 is held.
Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold bill 220, please.
Bill number 220 is held.
Bill number 310, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 310.
Second. Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 310, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill number 310 is finally passed.
Bill number 311, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the adoption of bill number 311.
Final passage.
I'm sorry, final passage of bill number 311.
Second.
Discussion.
Oh, go ahead. Was that Councilman Fitch?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Same objection I've made all the way through the meeting is this bill is being moved by Councilmember Walton Gray, and she has no authority to do that. So I'll be voting no for that reason. If she'd like, or someone would like to sponsor it for her or hold it until next week, I'd be happy to vote yes.
All right, we'll proceed with our roll call.
Councilmember Days?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, on bill 311, there are four ayes and three noes.
Bill 311 is finally passed.
Bill number 312, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 312. Second.
Second. Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 312, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 312 is finally passed.
Bill number 313, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 313.
Second. Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 313, there are seven ayes.
Bill 313 is finally passed.
Bill 314, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus and Dunaway.
I move for final passage of bill number 314.
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Madam Chair, as, as you know, this is the bill that would give the county council's office unlimited authority to write checks to outside law firms. And it's also the same bill that the substitute bill that I introduced last meeting. last meeting, uh, failed. We just heard the county executive say that he supports, uh, what was suggested in Sub Bill 1, um, at least in the substance that's in, uh, his letter, uh, to the public regarding what he's going to do at the Mound City Bar Association, as well in taking to consideration, uh, President Thomas Pruitt's letter from the NAACP, so my recommendation would be to hold this, allow us to work the legal force of law of the MWBE program into this bill before it's passed, is my suggestion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Daze.
I want to, um, I, I really want to say that I'm appreciative of the letter that the county executive sent out, however, uh, that letter really did not have any specificity to it or any teeth in actually making this thing happen. As we noticed in the December 22nd, uh, the indication was that there were no African American and no women, uh, law firms that were able to do this. As a matter of fact, it was indicated that we were looking for some kind of a unicorn, which I took great offense to. We don't necessarily have to look at St. Louis County or St. Louis City, we can look at the state of Missouri when we're looking and trying to find, uh, law firms and, um, and, um, uh, lawyers that can actually do work in St. Louis County, so that was, that was very offensive to me, and I just wanted that you to know that. Uh, I have not been in favor of outside counsel for that particular reason. The, the law work seemed to go to the same law firm each and every single time, and at no time were any minorities even considered for that. So while I appreciate the opportunity, I want this letter that the county executive sent out to have some teeth in it that these are the things that we will do, and not just a reaction to the fact of the substitute that Councilman Fitch offered. So that is my recommendation to you this evening, that we need to look at our words carefully as we talk about the, the, the minority community, and, and things such as this are, are very offensive, whether you intended them to be a knock, they were. And I think that an apology is owed to the African American law community as a whole and to African American people in general for that statement. So with that, I will not be voting for this because I want to see some specifics in how we are going to address, uh, the lack of diversity in this St. Louis County Council in St. Louis County. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Harder.
Yes, I would echo what, uh, Council, well, as Councilwoman Daze just said. I also, after our last meeting, we talked about the proverbial unicorn that supposedly doesn't exist, and right after that meeting, I Googled and found two African American and women-owned, uh, law firms in Kansas City. Uh, we talked to the bar in this area, uh, the Mound City Bar people came out and said they've got some, so to say that there's none that can be used, uh, for our legal work in this area is, is quite an understatement. Uh, the other piece of this is that, uh, we need to encourage that and we need to do a better job in our legal staff of looking for these type of things to give people opportunity in these areas of law, and it may not be all of our law business, but they could do some of our law business depending on what, what they're qualificate, what they're qualified to do, and we need to give those smaller law firms a chance. So, in this bill in particular, I feel it is a blank check to the bigger law firms here in town, and we need some diversity in names on letterheads than we do, uh, in some of these other things. So, uh, I will be voting no on this at this point. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Gray.
Yes, I have spoken with, uh, County Counselor's Office on many occasions, occasions about this matter, um, for over a year now. I've had an issue with, uh, the lack of minority, um, attorneys. First of all, in the county office, and then when we, uh, as well as when we solicit legal advice outside county, however, they have since then hired, uh, two or three African American attorneys, and, and again, none of this is to negate the fact that we need, uh, more, um, African American attorneys, but I do want to establish the fact that I have been in conversations about this for more than a year, and, uh, the Counselor's Office has attempted to rectify the matter, they have communicated with me, met with me, um, I'm very familiar with the, uh, Mound City Bar and, uh, several attorneys in that bar, and, uh, I mean, in that, uh, organization, and I truly, uh, I just want to say that I appreciate the effort. We may or may not have MBWBE, WBE, um, law firms, meaning whether they can, they, what's the word, aspire to the, uh, rules and regulations of a WMB, BMBE, not so much that we don't have African American law firms, but do they reach that threshold that is required under those, um, contracts? So that's, um, where the issue in my estimation lies, but I do want to again thank the Counselor's Office for their, um, attempt to rectify this again.
Alright, um, any further comment before we take our vote?
Let's just get to that.
Alright, we will go ahead, um, I did hear a second, I believe, can you confirm that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we did.
Um, let's go ahead and do our roll call.
Councilmember Daze?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 314, there are four ayes and two noes.
Bill Number 314 is finally passed.
Madam Chair, go ahead, Councilwoman. Yeah, Madam Chair, it looks like the vote shows 3-3 on the tie.
I am seeing something different on my vote. I am seeing,
More, oops.
I'm seeing 4-2. So I'm not seeing Councilman Harder's vote recorded.
Mine's recorded.
On my screen, it's not.
On my screen, it's not either.
Okay, now it is.
Now it is.
Is everyone seeing a 4-3 vote on their screen?
Yes.
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 Okay, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
I'd like the record to show I'm offering previous notice of my intent to make a motion to rescind this current motion related to Bill 314. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alright, we'll move on to Bill 315.
Bill Number 315, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Almost it again. I move for final passage of Bill Number 315.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Madam Chair, for, as my previous objections, uh, Bill 315 is one I would normally support. It wanted to be introduced and handled by some other council member, uh, because Councilmember Walton Gray is no longer a member of the council, I cannot support revoting no. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Daze.
Yeah, I want to make sure that for the, uh, for the county clerk there, that these, uh, objections that I am indicating, as I indicated earlier, are running through the entire, I want to make sure that that's running through the entire meeting, so that that is recorded appropriately. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Daze, yes.
Thank you.
The objections will be noted throughout the journal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alright, um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
No. I'm sorry, it went to the wrong scheduler. You changed it.
I changed it to no, Councilman Harder.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 315, there are four ayes and three noes.
Uh, Bill Number 315 is finally passed.
Moving on to Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 316, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 316.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Is there, second from Councilman Tracus.
Discussion.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
My ongoing objection to this being handled by a former council member and not a sitting council member, so for that very reason, I will be voting no unless someone else would like to handle this piece of legislation, then I will vote yes.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Oh, go ahead, Councilman Harder.
Same reason I will be voting no as Councilman Fitch. Thank you.
Alright, roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, on Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 316, there are four ayes and three noes.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 316 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Chairwoman, we have five additional resolutions this evening. Resolution Number 2, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Uh, which, which resolution is Resolution Number 2?
Rosemary Thomas, ma'am.
Okay, or just read the first paragraph and the, uh, resolve.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Mrs. Rosemary Thomas was born on October 31st, 1940, now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council offers its deepest condolences to the family and friends of Mrs. Rosemary M. Thomas. Section 2, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Mrs. Thomas's family as a permanent token of the council's sincere condolences and recognition of a life well-lived.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 1.
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, for the same objections I've had in the past, this resolution is sponsored, sponsored by a former council member. Uh, I believe that Mrs. Rosemary Thomas absolutely should be recognized in this matter. Uh, I would like to add my name to be introduced by me, um, if, if the rest of this, uh, body would support that, so I can vote and we can all vote, uh, with a clear mind, um, eye on this.
I would second that.
Alright, we will go ahead and, and call the roll.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye. Yes.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Uh, just to make sure, Madam Clerk, you did add my name to the resolution?
No, that wasn't my understanding. My understanding was you wanted to sponsor it. You want to be added as a cosponsor?
Well, I want to, I want to be added, um, as the introduced by, um, and certainly if anyone else would like to join that, they can. I just don't, we cannot, um, I cannot vote for Councilwoman Gray as the only sponsor of this.
You want to be added as a cosponsor with Walton Gray?
And that's the same as a sponsor. Both, you know, more than one person sponsored.
Well, it's usually someone sponsors and the rest cosponsor, but your name can be added to it with Councilmember Walton Gray.
Okay, please do.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Daze.
And, and I, I would agree with that, I, I know them personally and, uh, but I've already supported that, but I would like to be added as a cosponsor, if pleased.
Okay, we will let the, um, the record reflect that, uh, Councilman Fitch and Councilman Daze are cosponsors of the resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye, since Councilman Fitch is a sponsor.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 2, there are seven ayes.
Uh, Resolution Number 2 is adopted.
Resolution Number 3, introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray and Tracus.
Please read the, uh, sections that are outlined.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas this pandemic has in some manner impacted every resident of St. Louis County, whereas throughout the pandemic, law enforcement officers have not wavered from their mission to serve and protect with the highest degree of skill and professionalism, even when doing so put their professional, or I'm sorry, their personal health and safety at risk. And whereas, in addition to working long hours to ensure public safety, law enforcement officers and civilian employees have worked tirelessly to care for the community and develop relationships with residents in creative and compassionate ways through various community outreach programs. And whereas, as we embark upon a new year, it is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis Countyans to pause and acknowledge the tireless work and humanitarian efforts of the men and women of law enforcement and other first responders. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council extends heartfelt appreciation and admiration to the extraordinary officers and civilian employees of the St. Louis County Police Department, especially for continuing to go above and beyond the call of duty even in the face of a deadly pandemic.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 3.
Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead, Councilman Daze.
Madam, uh, Chair, I would like to be added as a cosponsor for this legis, uh, resolution. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman, or Councilman Fitch.
I would also like to be added as a, a sponsor of this legislation. It sounds like something that I would have written, uh, doesn't sound like something that I would have seen previously from the former councilwoman, but, uh, I'm happy to see that, uh, she at least supports this on the way out, so thank you for that.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Harder.
Please add my name to, as his cosponsor as well.
Alright, let's go ahead and take our roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Um, I, I just have, I, normally I don't say anything, but I'm pretty offended by that last statement. I've supported law enforcement, um, always. Just because I think that there needs to be changes in the department, doesn't mean I don't support law enforcement officers and I have, um, filed resolutions in the past. But with that, I, I.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye, and I'm missing the voting box on my computer. There it is.
Madam Chair, on resolution number three, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number three is adopted.
Resolution number four, introduced by councilmembers Walton Gray and Tracus.
I ask, uh, I mean, could you please read the sections that were previously outlined?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas the American Red Cross reports that every two seconds, someone in the United States needs blood and that during the winter months, it is particularly difficult to collect the necessary amount of blood and platelets needed to supply hospitals. And whereas maintaining a diverse blood supply is a priority to the American Red Cross because diverse blood donors may have the unique ability to help patients with different illnesses or inherited diseases, including sickle cell anemia, which primarily affects persons of African descent. Cells carry markers that determine blood type and certain blood types are unique to specific racial and ethnic groups. And whereas the American Red Cross has an urgent need for blood donations in January as hospitals resume surgical procedures and patient treatments that have been postponed during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council recognizes the month of January as National Blood Donor Month and encourages St. Louis Countyans to contact the American Red Cross of Greater St. Louis for more information about donating blood and plasma, as well as hosting or participating in a blood drive.
I move for the adoption of resolution number four, please.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Uh, I'd like to also be added to this resolution as a sponsor.
I would as well.
Me too. Thank you.
Um, before we take our vote, I wanted to make a brief comment on this. Um, I applaud much of the work that the Red Cross does. Um, I think blood donations are important. However, um, I do believe there is an antiquated policy within the Red Cross's blood donations, um, policy manual that says the following, um, men who have sex with men must defer sexual action three months before donating. And I think that that is a way that syst- systematically discludes members of the LGBTQ plus community from donating blood, um, and could have a, a negative impact on the community and the need for blood. And so while I will support this resolution, I would like to be on the record asking the Red Cross to reconsider that policy. Go ahead and take your roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number four, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number four is adopted.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, that was resolution number five. I apologize.
I'm sorry. Resolution number five is adopted.
Resolution number six, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray. I think that was resolution number four.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that was. Resolution number four.
Yeah, we should be on five.
We're on five.
Resolution four is Blood Donor Month.
Right.
Resolution number four, it was not resolution number five. Can we make sure that the record is corrected?
Yes, ma'am.
So resolution number four is adopted. We will now move on to resolution number five.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I move for the adoption of resolution number five. I guess if you could just read the first paragraph, so people, the public will know what is regarding.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas invasive bush honeysuckle is destroying forests understory by blocking sunlight from other species.
I move for the adoption of resolution number five.
Second.
Discussion?
Go ahead, Councilman Days.
I, I'm, I think that we, or did we have something regarding this invasive species earlier as a resolution? Uh, Councilwoman Gray?
Correct, that's why, uh, it states to correct an error.
Hey, I did not see, I, I did not see that, all right.
Yes, but thank you for mentioning that.
And, uh, also, I will, I'd like to be a sponsor on this as well. Thank you.
All right, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Since Councilwoman Days is a cosponsor, I'll vote, vote aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number five, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number five is adopted.
Resolution number six, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Uh, please read the sections outlined.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas the COVID-nineteen global pandemic has taught us that life is both fragile and precious and that we should never take the time we spend with our loved ones. And whereas time spent in gratitude for and appreciation of the simple pleasures of life, including the love and joy that children bring to us, is time well-spent. And whereas many of us have weathered the storm of the past months by finding new and creative ways to take care of one another and engage with our loved ones.
Did you, did you read the section?
Did you, I'm sorry. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council wishes everyone in our community a happy and healthy new year, filled with the joy of time spent with family and friends.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of resolution number six.
Second.
Discussion?
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
I would like to be added, um, as a sponsor of this, uh, since Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Walton Gray's the only sponsor right now, so.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Days.
I will sponsor this as well, thank you.
Add me as well, Councilman.
All right, um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number six, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number six is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Madam Chair. Item number one.
Um, this pertains to some appointments to, um, the Industrial Development Authority Board of Directors. We did have a hearing, um, I believe the majority of these, um, appointees were approved, um, a few weeks ago. However, we are still waiting for the opportunity to, um, meet and hear from Mr. Ashwin Dundee regarding his reappointment. Um, so we will hold that on the order of business pending, um, an opportunity to meet with him, and that will be the order.
Madam Chair, question, please?
Go ahead, Councilman Days.
Now, we have at, at some point previously approved others, not necessarily having the, uh, whole cadre of, 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 of appointees. Is there any reason that we do this one a little differently?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Can you say that a different way?
No, we have, uh, we have approved people who have been appointed. We have taken some out and the others who have not, uh, been before us, and we have approved them. And so I was curious as to what is the difference in, in this particular, uh, board, uh, rather than the others that we have done?
Well, I believe that the, what is different here is that, um, Ms. Alper Pressman, Ms. Spencer, and Mr., uh, Courtney Williams all had the opportunity to come and appear before a committee of the whole. And so we did approve them a couple meetings ago. Um, and it was my understanding that the will of the council was to have the opportunity to meet with everyone who's being appointed or reappointed to a board or commission. And so with that, we decided to hold the reappointment of Mr. Ashwin Dundee because he was not able to attend that hearing with the committee of the whole.
Right, I remember that, but I just, I just, I just thought that this was a tad different than others because we had done that before. We, we've approved the others and then waited on that one. But if that's how you want to do it, that's, that's not a problem. I just wanted to know what was the difference in, in this particular, um, appointment, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, new business, prepared orders.
Madam Chair, we have one prepared order this evening in the matter of the request of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of various offices and departments.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, order number one is adopted. All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting this evening. Um, Councilwoman Gray, I believe you had a, a, some final words you wanted to share.
Yes, I would be remiss if I did not thank my, um, administrative assistant, Adrian Jones. She has been spectacular, uh, great asset to my office. Um, so I did want to make sure I thank her and my previous assistant, Tony, as well. They both have been very helpful and attentive to the, um, needs of our constituents. And, uh, I truly appreciate them, especially, like I said, my new assistant that I have right now. I mean, my newest assistant, she's been great. And I just want to say thank you, Adrian. I know you're listening and I appreciate you.
And I echo your appreciation for Adrian Rochelle. She's been fantastic to work with this year.
Motion to adjourn?
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
You all have a good evening.
You too.